I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please rise and join me in reciting the Fledge of Allegiance. Remain standing as Monsignor Michael Bliss from St. Philomena's lead us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for bringing us together once again. Grateful for all those who are here, especially those that have served us throughout the year as members of this council in the different capacities they've served. And in a special way, we want to lift up our country and coronavirus. To all the people of our town, trying to address that situation both here at home as well as abroad. Lift our prayers up for them, their efforts, that we will bless them and help them in these weeks and months ahead to gain control over it and to win eventual cures. In the meantime, we pray for your blessings upon all people to give us a sense of reassurance, stability as we continue now to address this. Now, we ask for your blessings upon the needs at hand, the different things that we will discuss in our meeting tonight. We ask that you bless us and guide us and help us to make good decisions and to put those decisions into practice. So, thank you, Lord, and we ask for your blessings upon us this time. We offer this prayer in my humble name.
Amen. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Frericks?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Harland?
Here.
Mr. Reed?
Here.
Ms. Boat?
Mr. Brock?
Here.
Mr. Burris?
Here.
Mr. Kuhn?
Here.
Do we have a forum?
Thank you. Public participation, no one signed this evening, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of documents and action items is listed. Claims report claims dated February 25, 2020 through March 9, 2020. Meeting minutes, City Council meeting minutes, February 24, 2020. City Council closed session meeting minutes, February 24, 2020. Permit report, February 21, 2020. Police report, February 20, 2020. Fire report, February 20, 2020. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion before we vote?
I have two quick questions.
You go right ahead.
In general, founder administration, who or what is Civic Plus?
That is our website and community notification program.
Okay. Just an odd amount of money. I thought it would be even money, but it's an unusual thing. Second one underneath recreation, wondered what our plans are that we would purchase a concession trailer for $3,400.
That was discussed, included in this year's budget. That is predominantly for the T-ball. There's no concession.
To provide something out there.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think probably this concession sale, sales at one night that we'll probably pay for.
It could be. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Anyone else?
There, I noticed the salt in there. I just would have guessed that with the winner, maybe we've got a little surplus.
Yes, and I think we have to order some more because on contractual basis. Jim, you want to add anything?
That's right. We buy 300 tons a year.
Okay.
We start off with some, we start about 150 tons this year, we purchase 200, and we have another 100 to buy.
And we're required to do regardless whether they...
Yeah, we do it in the statewide bid. It's kind of a, it's a little bit of a game because you want to get the low price, but you don't know what you're going to need, so luckily we have a sole storage unit, and there's room for it there.
Okay. And so next year, we can evaluate what we have and...
We'll buy less.
Yeah, okay.
And next year, it'll snow.
And next year, we'll be six on your side.
Yeah.
No, you got it.
That's, I bought the wife a snow blower, a new one this year that...
The wife.
I did. Excuse me, that's not, that's not... We're talking cordial.
Any more comments or questions? Hearing your statement, we have roll call, please.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to the mayor's report, I have a couple of items. Residents will be receiving their United States Census forms in the next couple of weeks. Make sure you respond, but also be on the lookout for scams. Official forms can be submitted online and by phone, but you must have the form received by mail to do so. The Greenhouse Cafe at Allerton will be opening next Tuesday for the season. Let's move on to new business, airport presentation. Mike Atwood, would you come up to the table, please? It's an update.
Update, very, very, very quick. I'll just say, as a parent of a T-ball player, I think that's a tremendous investment. So, I appreciate it. Just by way of very quick update, I wanted to let you guys know because there has been a lot of work going on behind the scenes on the airport stuff, even though it hasn't been, a lot of it hasn't been public, right? Because we've been dealing with landowners and that type of thing. So, I really just don't want you to forget about us and make sure that you guys understand there is a lot of work being done behind the scenes. So, just again, by way of review, you know, we have secured the funding, you know, private funding. We have, I think now, still working on multiple, we'll just say multiple, probably four-plus potential pieces of property with willing sellers. We have done some engineering work behind the scenes, again, with some of this funding, not public funding. And so now where we're at really is to try to make sure that there's a critical mass of volunteers to carry this thing forward. Because the airport needs to have a municipal sponsor, right? But for that to work, we need volunteers really to do all of the work. And so, there was a meeting, Fred Sikorsky is sort of, is heading that piece of the project up. There was a meeting several months ago with, I don't know the number, but a fairly large group of people, I think a surprisingly large group of people that showed a lot of interest in this. A core of, you know, I want to say maybe 20 people that had some follow-up meetings that have had some interest. There has been, there have been multiple people interested in if we were to construct hangars and leasing hangars. There has been at least one commercial enterprise that has inquired about potentially setting up an agricultural spring operation. There's, there's a lot of stuff going on, okay? And so if anybody is interested in getting involved, again, Fred Sikorsky is the one kind of pulling this group together. Because the last thing we would want to do, obviously, is go through all of this stuff and then not have the volunteer critical mass to operate it. So, I think a lot of, a lot of really positive things, you all probably saw in the newspaper, the news gazette, it's probably been maybe a month ago about what Paxton is doing. So Paxton now has taken some steps to make sure that their airport remains public into the future. So I think what I've learned about this as a guy who's not a pilot is all these things that we talked about in terms of the building blocks that make places like Monticello great, there is just a lot more energy behind that than what shows up to city council meetings. So I appreciate the continued support and I'll give you updates as, as we continue to move on down the road, okay?
Yeah, thank you very much. Resolution 2020-07, a resolution authorizing the purchase of fire equipment. John?
We are proposing, I just called resolution, sorry. The purchase of some new gear, mainly air bottles, packs, and masks. Are you wearing a mask? No, I'm not wearing a mask. Okay. So currently, we are, this is our equipment right now, it's at 30. Why don't you go ahead and explain all this?
Okay. So, we're proposing to purchase from Suboi a 68 bottles, 20 bags, 20 masks, and regulators. Everything we would need to replace what we have now, we currently have quite a few bottles, the carbon bottles like that expire for 15 years, and we currently have quite a few of them that are ready to expire. These aluminum bottles, we still have probably 10 of these in service. These packs are made in 92. They are, this is our oldest ones, they don't have integrated pass alarm systems, which is a system that alarms when, you know, you get hurt, you're down in a fire, it's not moving. It's got a budget reader line, which allows us to connect to another firefighter if we go low on air in a bad atmosphere and be able to exit that building. The pressure on those bottles are, is a higher pressure, which allows us to have more air and a smaller profile design. These packs with these bottles are 34 pounds, and that whole system there is like 21, which doesn't seem like that big of a difference, but when it's on your back for a couple hours, it's pretty large. And this bottle, it'll last about 45 minutes, but that one will last about 30. So you get a little more working time in it. And so, we're proposing is to buy 60 bottles from Suboi, and they're going to throw the air packs for free and the masks for $35,000. One of these bottles costs about $100 apiece, and they're offered for half price and thrown in, the air packs are free and the masks. If we had to, and we're going to have to replace this stuff over the next five years, it costs us about, what did we figure, about?
Over $200,000.
Over $200,000.
If we bought all brand new, it'd be over $200,000. If we do it by replacement, it'd be over $50,000.
Well, no, if it was $137,000 to replace all this, it would be over $200,000 to buy on this with the 45-minute air pack. The value of this, what they're giving us, I appreciate the packs because they're huge, would be about $135,000. They're going to get it to us at 35.
They upgrading their stuff, or what are they doing? Why are they disappearing?
They bought all brand new, brand new air packs. They bought 45-minute bottles and their new chief, he's also on champagne, he's used to a 30-minute bottle a quarter time as far as work cycles inside, fires in bad atmospheres. And he didn't want the larger bottle, but that's something here we can benefit from with fewer firefighters. So, their administration just said to get whatever they can out of them, and they bought all the 30-minute stuff like they wanted. So, we thought long would give better value for the city to spend $35,000 now and to spend over $135,000 to replace everything in the next five years. Next year, we have, I think, 11 bottles to replace, and the brand new cost is $11,000. So, the packs aren't brand new, they're not super nice and shiny, but they'll, we'll just buy as long as these bottles are good for.
How many years do those bottles have left?
15. 15 years.
Oh, okay.
Let's make it new.
Okay.
So, I'm going to go on it, I'm going to scroll it. 15 years.
But is it $65,000?
What's that?
I thought that, I thought this is...
$35,000.
$35,000.
Their budget is for stuff is 65.
We're 65,000.
Got it. I'm not reading it right. I read it, but, okay.
Yeah.
Cool.
Questions?
You see major equipment purchases down the road somewhat? Because you're, you're, you're stepping up, you're stepping up half of your yearly budget on March 15th.
Right, I know.
So, and I know you've looked, I mean, I'm not...
I know.
Do you see?
Well, we knew we were going to have to replace these over the next five years, so replacing them now, I mean, this chance doesn't come off, you know, so we figured we jump on it, propose it, it's turned down, and we'll have the budget over the next several years, but, you know, a deal like this doesn't come off.
No, and I understand. I think, I think it's plus, I think it's a good deal, but, and I guess I would pretty well assure you that the fire department came and asked for money later in the year, we wouldn't say no. Pretty hard to turn you down.
Terry, I've had a lot of conversations about budget in the last...
I'm sure. That's all I got, I do, I've got a nice budget. Okay. Well, thank you, and good luck with them. I think they're, I think they're good by.
Terry, were you going to say something?
Chief Rupke and I have had a conversation too about that specific thing, Alden and Brock, and if something were to occur later, because you're right, it's March, March 9th, then we'd have to amend the appropriation ordinance, and we'd have to do that later. But chief knows that he's kind of stuck for this year, but again, I don't, I think we'd be remiss in our duties to pass this up.
It would always be in my mind, I should, yeah, John, I agree with you.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 20...
So moved.
...in a second, 2020-07?
Second.
In a second, okay, so, I mean, anyone else have a comment to make and a question? Have a roll call, please, Jim.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2020-08, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the code of ordinances for the city of Monticello, Illinois. Callie?
An ordinance adopts supplement 21, which incorporates all the ordinances from the last half of last year that have already been adopted, that's just formally accepted into the entire code. So you're not adopting anything new, you're just saying, yes, we want it in our book of ordinances. We've done this 21 times.
Yep.
Pretty standard.
Is there a motion to waive second reading?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2020-08?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
And Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to ordinance 2020-09, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement by and between the city of Monticello and Dunn &amp; Gone Racing Incorporated. Callie?
Mayor, I want to just do a few, those of you who haven't been part of any TIP discussions to date, the city of Monticello approved TIP 2, which is implemented by District 2 in 2006. TIP is a mechanism that municipalities can use to encourage investment by property owners into potentially lighted or stagnant areas, and the incentive in the case is the amount that the assessed value increases that is reflected to the property taxes goes into the TIP district, and that can be used as an incentive for TIP eligible items on TIP eligible properties. So, that's the history of it. TIP redevelopment agreements, the city has made four, and they traditionally are made with the developer for a percentage of the amount of increment that goes into the, the property taxes to the TIP district, which is reflected through the increase in property tax assessment from the investment. But they are typically for a ratio of that amount, usually a 50/50 split depending on the situation, or in some instances, like with the Moore Building, for example, the incentive was the property itself, but the city has done with the 20 or 50, a variety of those. Once the project has been completed, the developer will submit an itemized list of the TIP eligible, re-approved in the redevelopment agreement, those costs, and proof of payment. And then from that point forward, the city will reimburse on an annual basis after property taxes have been paid for the amount that was approved in the redevelopment agreement. It's typically capped at that amount in the redevelopment agreement or through the life of the TIP, whichever. So, the developer is not being reimbursed more than their project is actually creating, and they're not reimbursed up front. This is a traditional page-go agreement, which is what the city has done. The developer, because the TIP Act is about that, they've been very excited to read, the developer is also bound by state statute in the TIP Act, they have to call up prevailing wage rates, they have to, again, be on certain eligible TIP eligible items and so forth. So, moving forward, John Dunn, who is here with us, Joshua, he's the president of Dunn &amp; Gone Racing, and you may remember, they approached the council last year for zoning floor property in the former Blue Ridge Backwoods building. So John has had Dunn &amp; Gone Racing for a number of years, and he's expanded to property here in town. They make custom race cars all over, that they send all over the world, which is pretty exciting. And Josh does welding for himself, and I remember his dad now, so he's pretty talented. And they also have a third business that is located in there as well. So it's kind of creating a little bit of activity and investment in that corridor. But because the property sits on a very flat level area, and it is an older building, it does need some improvements, so he has requested TIP assistance to help offset the necessary expenses for roof replacement, facade, the log, facade doesn't quite go with their theme, but also the door, the soffit fascia, and then because the ground is pretty flat, there's some site drainage work, I'm sure you could go out and see, I'll show you today what's going on. So they'd like to do something to alleviate the water, basically redirect it from running into the building. So John has provided several estimates for all these components of work, which total about $52,410, and these items meet three or four of the goals identified, there's 15 goals in the TIP plan when the TIP was approved in 2006. So you have to stay within those boundaries. It is obviously anticipated that the investment will result in a higher assessment of property. We would be here if it wasn't going to be increasing, thinking it would be a property, and therefore he would be able to recoup some of those funds back. So just as I stated before, with the traditional page-go agreement, reimbursement would happen on an annual basis beginning in tax year 2020, which is payable next year, we can't be retroactive, we have to move forward, and it would be 50% of the TIP increment generated by the project until the cap is met at $52,410 or the remaining of life of the TIP, which in this case would be 10 more years. So, that's the history of that. So the developer can take advantage of an early timeframe because contractors are going to start really getting busy, it is recommended that the council discuss and if you understand, have all your questions answered, waive the second reading and vote on the ordinance.
Good, thank you. Any questions?
Any question?
Is there a motion to waive second reading?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
And Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2020-09, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement by, between the city of Monticello and Dunn &amp; Gone Racing Incorporated?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? John?
Do all these items fall under the TIP, hopefully they all fit within...
The items in terms of his projects?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you look on Book 1, the very last page of that, you break it down into the different categories that the TIP Act identifies. So, the roof gutter fascia, soffit, lighting doors and signage, that would be rehabilitation or renovation of an old city building, the drainage work and gravel backfill would fall under public infrastructure improvements, that's not just, I know it prices public, but it's public and private.
And you said there are four that are already able to go by, just your curiosity?
So we have one with Kirby Hospital, Kelly's Accounting, the Moore Building, I only have three, I apologize.
This would be four, John.
This would be the fourth, yes, I was thinking of that.
Anyone else?
I was out there yesterday, and they gave me a tour of the, and it's impressive, it's kind of a, kind of a gym that we have here. People in Monticello benefit from the traffic that comes through, and they have to stay somewhere, they eat here, and they're, I mean, this is, this is a pretty good operation in terms of, I mean, there are vehicles that are $80,000 to $100,000. I mean, this is a high-end operation with clientele from around the world, so I was impressed.
And this is a badly limited, as you generate as well as the public.
Any other comments or questions? Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2020-10, an ordinance amending title, yes, seven, chapter 77, parking schedules, regulating parking on West Washington Street. That goes to Brett.
Your attached ordinance, it's required, it's created a forcible no parking section along West Washington Street. The city's originally completed the work on the streets, even pedestrian crossing Washington Market Street. And part of that work included widening of the sidewalks and relocating the curbing gutter, outwards the center of the road, and that stretch goes from where Marquee Hair Salon is all the way down to the corner where 50219 is. And what that did, it effectively eliminated the parallel parking along that stretch there, there on the south side of Washington Street, kind of those businesses. We're proposing to put a no parking from here to the corner except for loading and unloading sign, and there would be a revenue that, as it shows on its, it's, it's, it's recommended the city council discuss and approve ordinance 2020-10.
Comments or questions? Is there a motion to waive second reading? Second?
Second.
Thank you. I need a roll call.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2020-10?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing your statement, now I need another roll call.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Resolution 2020-11, a resolution approving a letter of intent to purchase real property, 1109 North State Street, Monticello, Illinois, 61856.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This involves property, North State Street, 1109 North State Street, formerly occupied formerly occupied by Kirby Hospital and Carl Hospital, I believe, at one point in time. But communication was sent to Kirby Hospital during the late morning hours of Thursday, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, asking if Kirby Hospital would be interested in pursuing the sale of this property with the city of Monticello. As we have addressed the space needs of the Public Works Department in recent years, the purpose of this possible property acquisition is to continue those efforts towards addressing the space needs of some of the other city departments and their respective personnel. This property includes the building and approximately three feet of space adjacent to the exterior walls of the advanced parking accommodations. Building itself contains approximately eleven thousand three hundred square feet at ground level with a basement, adding approximately two thousand six hundred square feet of functional space. The original building was constructed sometime in the nineteen eighties, and building additions continued through two thousand and six. Resolution two thousand and twenty dash eleven, and the attached letter of intent, provides for a ninety-day due diligence period, and also allows for a binding purchase and sales agreement to be negotiated by the mayor, city clerk, city administrator, and city attorney, consistent with the terms of this letter of credit. It is recommended the city council further discuss and approve Resolution two thousand and twenty dash eleven as presented and proceed with the possible property acquisition of eleven oh nine North State Street. Mr. Tenhouse has joined us this evening. If you have any questions that perhaps I cannot answer, I'm sure Mr. Tenhouse would be more than willing to answer those.
Comments or questions?
It's a heck of a deal.
Hearing or saying none, is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty dash eleven?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments now? Hearing or saying none, roll call.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Frericks?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Seabans?
Yes.
Ms. Harlan?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
And Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Item seven on the agenda, Alder Person's Reports, we'll start with John tonight.
Let's go, Alina.
Thank you, that's good.
That's all we got, man.
That's good, that's all I got.
Oh, I long for the field.
I don't have anything.
Tammy, nothing. Pamela.
Speaking of the field house, I spent, I don't get out much, but I finally got to go, and that, that walkway is amazing.
It is.
It is so awesome.
It's very nice.
I mean, it's something to really be proud of.
I went for Taco Tuesday one week, I forgot about, I forgot about Stuckles area, it was really nice.
It's so cool.
So, I had to go to Taco Tuesday the next week.
Yes, good one. Yeah, it was so awesome.
You should get on one.
I should. It was winter.
Mr.?
Nothing.
Michael?
Nothing.
I can't add.
You can't beat that. Wendell?
Now, the specific, I just want to direct, I guess, to Public Works. Do we have any tentative start time on the Marion Street project? And I know, I'm not about weather, I'm just, is there any tentative start date?
Do you ask this every...
I know, because I get asked about it a hundred times a week.
April first is what we're looking to do, so hopefully April first. There's, it's just, we have favorable weather, and it wasn't good today until it started raining pretty hard.
And then they go, it started raining, well, I do appreciate your efforts in the coal pack over the craters for me, we're doing the best we can.
You're talking about the paint.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, the whole thing, just to start.
Oh, I...
Marion Street project.
Yeah, that's so, so...
Now, we got two...
Yeah, that's actually, that's actually mine.
Alright, we got the ball back.
I didn't do it this time.
Throw the ball back to you. Please, and I'm not putting you on the spot.
No, no, that's okay. We're, we're waiting on, it's all temperature dependent, they can't, the asphalt, if it's below forty-five degrees, and quite frankly, we don't pull on asphalt.
No, I know what we need.
It's like low forty-five degrees, so they're waiting to get some consistent weather. We should be absolutely the first project to get them on our list, because at a certain point, we will start charging them working days for not getting it completed on time, and we can start charging them working days as of April first. So, I think it's April first, right, Terry?
I think so.
April first or April fifteenth, one of the, I have to look, it's in I G O S. So, so they're practically out of working days on the job as it is, they've got four or five working days left. So, they will get, they will get to ours as soon as possible, because it starts cutting into their pocket pretty heavily if they're not here working. So, they'll try to get here before that cutoff date, because whatever work they do before that cutoff date, we can't charge them working days. So, they'll try to get here before that.
Thank you, normally it's like April fifteenth, you get a mean temperature of forty-five, you know?
Yeah, it should be, it should be pretty loving time, as long as the weather gets good and kind of stays good, they'll start to asphalt plans back up and do action better.
I will put that into my presentation, thank you very much.
But our guys have done a pretty good job of trying to get the patch out.
They have, they're the best you can do.
And I know it's, I know it's, it's in bad shape, it's in really bad shape, but they're, they're doing everything they can.
I know, and I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Travelable.
That's all I have.
Hey, Jim, I want to ask you something, I'm not like an alderman or an alderwoman, but I, I do, I should have asked earlier. April first is when the landfill opens.
So, the holes he was talking about, cut the holes out there.
I got you.
So, yes, April first.
It's April first, okay. Because I've only had it on six people in choir, so I've just done it, in fact, I put it on Facebook a couple places.
Right, like I was saying, it's a real hopeful living, the weather helped out today, but...
It didn't happen, no, okay.
I do, I have one other thing, one thing to Terry. I see the CA sixes in the, in the primary plate, are they, are we done now, are, were their parts done?
I think the contractor is done, but don't quote me on that, and then we'll just have the engineering piece to close the project down and get a no further mediation letter.
Okay, thanks, thank you, that's all I have.
You're good, okay. Chief Carter?
Yes, as you can see in the plates, we paid for spilling the project, and that will be beginning this week. I'll be in Clinton for a couple days, we're doing some training on what it all entails and how much of it is there, and we also get to select our portions, go over the parts that are going to pertain to us, and see how it fits in the big picture with Puyott County and also Dewitt County. So, I'll be there for a couple days this week. Also, Wednesday night, if you're not busy, the Golden Eagles, Puyott County Golden Eagles are playing the high school staff in one of the gyms, whichever one that is, six o'clock Wednesday night, so, please, it's a great game every year.
It is. You done?
That's it.
Chief Repke?
First, thank you for approving the airbags, I really appreciate that. First thing I want to do is introduce, here's new officers, I'm part of our, it's a good rock, and we want to introduce them. First, I want to introduce a promotion, Tim Clifton. Now, Tim, Tim's my partner to our assistant fire chief. And we have two captains, Adam Calmack, and Cole Hunt. And new lieutenant, John Mullin. I'm not quite old, but he's been... Lieutenant Dennis Seabans. And then we have two other lieutenants, Jeremy Calhoun and Brandon Dukes, who are working tonight, so I just wanted to introduce the new officers to the city council.
Very good.
Okay. We had our three weeks of training this past month in February. The first week, we had Kirby ambulance come out, and we all went through the rigs, and got to know where everything is, and all the compartments, and so forth, so all the firefighters got to know that. Adam and Cole are both members of the Kirby ambulance department, so, we really have a good tour. So, when we were on scene, we get into those rigs, they call for something, we know exactly where to go and get them, so, two hours training there. After that meeting, we had officers meeting, current officer staff. We get credit for meetings, training hours for those meetings, which actually goes to our ISO rating, once we come back to doing that again, so, we are going to continue our officers meeting and officers training, so, we talked about ISO and get back to that. Second week, we did a fire behavior class with firefighter two module, and that was facilitated by, again, Adam and Cole. Adam and Cole are full-time firemen in Champaign, so to have that experience is really valuable to our department. So, they facilitated discussion with all the firefighters about fire behavior when there's a fire, and how to recognize it, where it's going, what's it doing. So, we had a couple hours training there, and we had an officer meeting. The third week, we had Kirby, or Carl, usually he messes, Dan Alp, come out and do a little airways, screen airways for unconscious patients, things like that, so, that was pretty interesting training. One important ability there is, that we talked about in the last meeting, we got two recruits that we need city council to approve next meeting. We talked about being down fourteen members, twenty, so we got two recruits, our screening committee, John and Dennis, one part of the screening committee, approved two members, we'll have that for you next meeting, and we'll bring them in, hopefully they'll make it, and introduce you, and we just...
That's great, that's great.
We're getting there, it's good stuff after a month, we got two recruits. In February, we had twenty-eight calls, nineteen were medical calls, nine were fire calls. Nothing really interesting last month, we had a home order report that their oven had overheated, we just went there and plugged it, basically. It got cool again, so... Fireline Middle School. It took much to do. They were doing the cleaning, the oven, and we'd do the, put it on a clean cycle, because it was really...
Oh, yes, it does, I do that at night, I don't have a...
Went to Monticello Middle School, I believe it was a Saturday or Sunday, I don't know, it was there. The fire line went off, we kept Terry, nothing was found there. Had another home order with gas leak, with a water heater, checked the gas, and see it all, nothing was found, so, just calling, checking out, so, nothing really interesting in February. That's it for the fire department.
Any questions of John?
Thanks again for listening.
Good record, I like to be a kept up to date, that's great.
We like to keep up to date.
Yep.
I do this for Pam, because I know she's...
That's it.
Well, you know she doesn't get out much, right?
Why don't you take her on a fire call?
Why don't you do that? Fire one deserved that.
Yeah.
We'll look about.
Then you can't talk.
Did we buy one of those? Terry, I'm sorry, you have to follow this. Yeah, that's a tough one to follow. You can pick up a volunteer firefighter application at City Hall, and I was gonna, I was gonna mention the green waste facility, the reason that cannot open till later, we're hoping April first. You might be able to get to the location. You will probably not be able to get out, so, this rain is only going to hamstring us even more, but you cannot, you will get stuck. It's that simple. So, we would love for everybody to bag their leaves and take them out there and be done with it, but you will not get out of that facility. Personnel policy, we've been working on that, the attorney, Dan Bullen and I, the cannabis portion has been updated, and most recently, the sexual harassment, new state statutes have been updated as well, so, we will have a new full-time employee policy manual in the very near future addressing new state statutes. And then, the mayor and Callie and I went to Rural Development Conference in Springfield, February twenty-sixth, seventh. It's very enlightening, and it makes me feel good that we go to these conferences, and this one's rural, and it's not just Illinois, it's kind of a Midwestern thing, that people come from Wisconsin, and Minnesota, and Missouri, and other places. But what we're doing in our city, not only downtown, but we could, we ought to be, all be very proud of this community. There's a lot of success stories that fall short of what this community offers, but it's very pleasing to see what we have done. The big one this year was broadband, and it had the state of Illinois in all these spaces that had zero broadband. And in the very middle here, this tiny little quadrant town of Monticello, was highlighted as broadband capable. So, I think the efforts from, from the county, the city, the school district, library, to bring broadband, and then to take it farther to home, kudos to, to all of those involved with that, so, that's all I have tonight.
Any other comments or questions? Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.